Good evening. I'd like to officially welcome everyone to our May 14th work session. I call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock PM. Please join me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Bradley.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, we welcome you to the May meeting of the Newton County Board of Education. In this, the final month of the academic school year, we have termed May celebration season. For all of the students who will be graduating to the end-of-year athletic honors and awards earned by our students, to our staff members who have earned advanced degrees and credentials, and our partners in education, and of course, our retirees, there truly has been so much to celebrate in Newton County schools this month. There is no doubting that this has been a stellar year for our district, and I wanted to pause to recognize our 19,000 students and our 1,200 staff members for the incredible work that they've done. Members of the board in May, please also let me acknowledge that we celebrated School Communicators Day, Mental Health Awareness Month, and School Nurses Day. As a district, we have all benefited from the impact of the persons who support these focus areas in our district. We thank you, all of you, for making our district a great place to work, learn, and grow. And lastly, Madam Chair, I cannot forget that last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. There were site-based recognitions at each of our schools, but as you know, there are no words to adequately express how much we value our teachers, those who formally have the title of teacher, and those who teach our kids through their example and leadership. Every adult in Newton County schools is a teacher of children, from our transportation specialists, the first ones that see our children in the morning, to our after-school program facilitators who close out each day with our kids. On behalf of our Board of Education, to all of our wonderful teachers, we say thank you. Madam Chair, I believe we have a video.
Thank you.
Hello. It's Duke Bradley, Superintendent of Newton County Schools, and this week, we are excited to celebrate Teachers Appreciation Week. Look, right here in Newton County, we have over 1,200 teachers, and each and every one of them really represents what we are all about in Newton County schools. We believe in making sure that we are providing opportunities for our young people to fulfill their academic hopes, dreams, and aspirations, and we cannot do that without each and every one of you. We also know that teachers have the most direct and measurable impact on student achievement, and so this week, we pause to celebrate you, to honor you, and to recognize you for not only what you do, but for who you are. So, thank you so very much for being a teacher here in Newton County schools. We love you and we appreciate you. We look forward to celebrating you this week.
On behalf of the entire community, I would like to express our deepest gratitude and thank you to the teachers of Newton County schools. The work you do is truly commendable and appreciated.
On behalf of the Covington Police Department, I want to thank all the teachers within the Newton County school system for their dedication and work with the students.
Thank you, teachers, for believing in us and pushing us to be the best version of ourselves.
With this week being National Teacher Appreciation Week, we are so thankful for the teachers in this community that have an opportunity to affect the children's lives by making sure that they have the proper education. In every corner of this community, we celebrate our teachers. Thank you for all that you do and the impact that you have on our children's lives.
My name is Roxx Turner, New Fire Chief in Newton County, for our service. First, I want to thank every Newton County teacher that's in Newton County. We appreciate all your service and building the foundation for the future.
Thank you, teachers, for always pushing us to do our best.
This is Joe Doss, City of Covington Fire Department Fire Chief, just wishing everybody a great remainder of the year and wanted to let everybody know City of Covington Fire Department recognizes all the teachers and the National Teacher Appreciation Week coming up.
On behalf of myself, Sheriff Ezell Brown, and the entire staff of the Newton County Sheriff's Office, I would like to extend a special thanks to all the teachers out there. Thank you for your selfishness, patience, and passion for shaping the future.
I'm Fleta Baggett, and I'm the Mayor of the City of Covington, and I wanted to take this opportunity to tell you thank you for this great week of teacher appreciation. We here at the city couldn't be grateful or more appreciative for all that you do for our children and those of us that got to walk through the halls of the Newton County school system. Thank you, and we appreciate you and all that you do.
Thank you, teachers, for everything you do.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I just want to say thank you, teachers, for all that you do, and we appreciate you.
So, there you have it. Teacher Appreciation Week 2024. If you did not know before and now how valued you are, how special you are, and how much we appreciate the contributions that you make to the lives of young people, now you know. So, again, on behalf of our Board of Education, we thank you, we celebrate you, and we hope that you've had a wonderful week. Let's give our teachers a round of applause. And lastly, I would be remiss not to also express a happy belated Mother's Day to all of the mothers of our district, to all the mothers of our county, and also including our Chair, Mrs. Coggins, and our Vice Chair, Mrs. Henderson Baker. Thank you so much, and Happy Mother's Day. Madam Chair, this concludes my welcome, and I look forward to a productive meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley. Up next is our special recognition.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, as you can see, we've got a packed house tonight, lots and lots and lots to celebrate, as I mentioned in my welcome. This is celebration season, and tonight is no different. This evening, we are excited to recognize several award-winning students from both the recent Northeast Regional Social Studies Fair and the Georgia Social Studies Fair. The students before you have dedicated time and hard work to research, to explore, and to question as they prepare their projects for these competitions. Tonight, we will recognize their accomplishments. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of recognition from our school board chair, Mrs. Abigail Coggins. First up, we have Brenna Williams. Brenna is a freshman at Alcovee High School and the Newton College and Career Academy's STEAM Institute, and she is not only a region winner, but get this, she is also a state champion. As her project, "How Does Fast Fashion Impact the Environment?" won both first place at the regional fair and also Best in Class Two Award for Geography at the State Social Studies Fair. Congratulations, Brenna, on a job well done. Next up, we have Kalia Collier. Kalia is an eighth-grade student at Newton County STEAM Academy, and she too is both a region and state champion. As her project, "The Manhattan Project," earned first-place honors at the regional competition and Best in Class Two Award for History in the State Social Studies Fair. Congratulations, Kalia, on your outstanding accomplishment. Next up, we have Maria Sam Peller. Sam, as she prefers to be called, is a freshman at Newton High School, and she won first-place at the Regional Social Studies Fair for her project, "Life from A Through F." Congratulations, Sam, on your first-place award. Next up, we have Isaiah Foster, Brianna Moffett, and Lauren Parsons. These three young ladies are eighth-grade students at Liberty Middle School, and they won first-place honors at the Regional Social Studies Fair with their project, "The Effects of Participating in Extracurricular Activities." Congratulations to each of you on your award-winning research. Next up, we have Zachary Fertilas. Is Zachary with us this evening? Zachary couldn't be with us, but let me just share with you, Zachary is a freshman at Eastside High School and the Newton County STEM Institute, and he won second-place honors at the Regional Social Studies Fair with his project, "Black Lives Matter: Could It Be Better?" Congratulations, Zachary, on your first, on your second-place award. I know he's watching at home. Let's give Zachary a round of applause. Next up, we have Hua Hong and Liliana Cuadros. Hua and Liliana are freshmen at Newton County, Newton High School, and they earned a second-place award at the Regional Social Studies Fair with their project, "How Do School Pressures Affect the Mental Health of Students?" Congratulations, ladies, on a job well done. Next up, we have Jasmine Murkerson. Jasmine is a seventh-grade student at Newton County STEAM Academy, and she won second-place at the Regional Social Studies Fair with her project, "What Is the Difference Between the Tango and the Traditional African Dance?" Next up, we have Isa Jackson and Genevieve Kirkham. Isa and Genevieve are fifth-grade students at Newton County STEAM Academy, and they won second place at the Regional Social Studies Fair with their research project, "How Did Anne Frank Make an Impact During the Holocaust?" Congratulations, ladies, on your award. Next up, we have Adeline Consuerga. Madam Chair, members of the board, Adeline is an eighth-grade student at Newton County STEAM Academy, and she earned a second-place award with her project, "Female Ballet Dancers and Eating Disorders." Congratulations, Adeline. Next, we have Aleah Walker. Aleah is a seventh-grade student at Newton County STEAM Academy, and she won third-place at the Regional Social Studies Fair with her project, "50 Years of Hip-Hop." Congratulations, Aleah. Next up, we have Joshua Adeya. Joshua is a freshman at Eastside High School and the Newton County STEM Institute, and he earned third-place honors at the Regional Social Studies Fair for his project, "What is Artificial Intelligence and How Is It Changing Our Lives?" Congratulations, Joshua, on a job well done. Next, Madam Chair, members of the board, we have Nicholas White II. Nicholas is a seventh-grade student at the Newton County STEAM Academy, and he earned third-place honors at the Regional Social Studies Fair with his project, "What Are the Benefits of Public Transportation?" Congratulations, Nicholas. And lastly, Madam Chair, we have Katelyn Lane. Katelyn Lane. Katelyn is a sixth-grade student at Newton County STEAM Academy, and she earned third-place at the Regional Social Studies Fair with her research project, "How Did Barbie Evolve?" Congratulations, Katelyn, on your award. As you can see, Newton County schools was very well-represented at this fair, so let's congratulate our students and their teachers once more. It is truly important to note that research projects submitted into these competitions receive rigorous evaluation and deliberation by judges. Our winners here this evening have not only excelled academically, but have also shown a commitment to understanding historical context, analyzing societal issues, and engaging in meaningful and respectful discourse. The fact that our district has so many regional and state award winners exemplifies not only their hard work and academic excellence, but also the strength and dedication of our social studies program and our teachers. Madam Chair, this concludes the recognition portion of our meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley. I just want to say I'm in awe. Congratulations to all of you. This is what it's all about, what you do and how you represent Newton County, and we are so proud of all of you. But I want you to turn around and look at the people behind you real quick, you students. Give them a round of applause. That's what got you here. Not only is it your teachers and the school system, but it's also your friends and your family that get you here, so they deserve a round of applause, so thank you. All right. With that said, we're grateful to have a full house tonight, and now we're going to get back to our agenda and our work sessions. So, if you would like to go, now would be the time to step out, but we would love for you to stay. We do ask that when you do go outside, if you want to take pictures, just keep the noise down so we can move forward with our meeting. All right. Next up on the agenda is our public participation, which I'm going to have our Vice Chair read our rules.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Public participation is the time that the board has set aside to encourage you as members of our community to voice your opinion on any matter either included on or excluded from the printed agenda. A maximum time of five minutes will be allotted to a single individual or a single topic based on the number of requests. Complaints against any employee of the school system will not be heard unless the complaint has been submitted in writing to the superintendent at least seven days prior to the board meeting. If unresolved, any personal complaints about school personnel must be put in writing for the board to review in executive session. Personal attacks against any member of the board will not be tolerated. Once the time for public participation has passed, discussion of topics will be restricted to board members only. Thank you in advance for complying with this request. Madam Chair, we have Adrian Tisdale. Will you please step to, we have a mic and a podium right here. If you'll go to it, it should already be on green for you to speak to it.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I live in the woods of Deering, and I may not look like it, but I'm 68 years old. I waited until I was 67 years old to retire so I wouldn't have the Social Security Administration to cap my income. That being said, I don't think a senior should be penalized because I make more than $20,000 a year. It is inappropriate. My taxes, my mortgage just went up to $2,000. I'm a senior. I'm trying to retire, so my mortgage keeps going up because I am paying school taxes. Your millage rate is 16%, twice the amount of what my property taxes are on my house. So, I'm paying for children to go to school, which I'm sure is real important, but I don't have any kids in school. I'm paying you $2,000 a month where my taxes on my house is only $1,000, I mean, for the year. So, now I'm paying over $3,000 a year on my house that I'm supposed to be retiring in, and every single year, you keep going up, 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 and up. When does it stop? We have nothing, seniors have nothing against Newton County providing a good education for the children, if that's what it's doing. But I'm being told that you guys now are building three new stadiums? So, is the money going to social activities, or is the money going to education? I do know that I don't have any school-aged children, and I don't think it's appropriate that I have to pay double the amount of money on my house to education for kids to go to school. I have no kids in school. It's inappropriate, it's unfair. So, I want to plead with you guys to, if in fact you're not at least going to waive it totally, you need to reduce it back down to like 8% millage rate. If I have to pay anything, it needs to match what the taxes are on my home as opposed to double the amount. And then you have a tax assessor coming out to the houses, assessing the houses at higher than market value. I'm a mortgage broker, and the reason why my income dropped dramatically, which was still not low enough, is because I had cancer. That's another thing. So, my income, like, totally went down for two years because I was battling cancer. But it was still more than $20,000 a year. So, here I am battling cancer, paying for medical costs, and now my mortgage goes up $300 a month for me to pay school taxes. It's inappropriate. I don't know how long God's going to let me live, but I shouldn't have to spend the rest of my life scraping the bottom of the barrel trying to pay taxes for children to go to school that I do not have. You have a lot of parents that have kids. They need to pay the taxes for their children to go to school, not senior citizens that can't afford it. Some senior citizens only get, I'm lucky to even get the tax, the social security that I get. I know senior citizens that get $1,000 a month. I was fortunate enough to get way more than that, but I shouldn't have to use my whole social security check to pay my mortgage, and it keeps going up, 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 and up. It's really inappropriate. And I'm asking you to really look at this situation because you're going to have a lot of seniors that are not going to be happy with this county, not going to be happy at all. And all I'm saying is that you guys need to take that more into consideration, the quality of life for seniors. And I do mortgages for seniors all the time. They can't afford their homes. They keep coming to us to say, "Can you refinance my house? I need a lower rate. My payment is too high." It's not that their payment is too high, the taxes are too high, the insurance is too high. So, that in closing, please take into consideration what I'm asking you to do.
Thank you, Ms. Tisdale. Next up is our approval of the agenda for the evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some who.
Ms. Henderson Baker, Mr. Trey Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up will be our approval of the minutes. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, then, our superintendents' reports.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board, good evening. The special purpose local option for education sales tax five distribution for last month was $1,935,276, which is an increase of $89,358 from the previous month. Title edvalorem tax collection for March was $588,688,000. And finally, expenditures are within budget at 80.30% of funds expended and 83.33% of the fiscal year complete. And the financials for April are provided for your review, and that is the financial report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bar. Next up is our strategic plan report.
See, I have some highlights from the superintendent's report this evening. Good evening to everyone, excuse my manners, I'm sorry. Under the area of student achievement and success, Hawa Sagra, a fourth-grader from South Salem Elementary School, was recognized as a state-level winner for the 2024 Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition in April. This writing contest is open to students in grades K through 12 statewide and includes all types of writing such as short stories, poetry, essays, and research reports. In the area of high-quality workforce, we want to remind everyone that our human resources team is planning a summer hiring event for classified and certified staff. The event will be held on June 6, 2024, at Porter Performing Arts Center from 1:00 PM until 3:00 PM. In the area of culture, climate, and communication, in partnership with Covington Women's Club, the NCS Special Education Department staff hosted the Fifth Annual Exceptional Art Show and Silent Auction on Friday, April 26, 2024, at Palmer Stone. All proceeds will benefit the NCS Special Education students at all schools through the purchase of sensory items. The artwork on display was created by students with disabilities. And finally, in the area of organizational and operational effectiveness, on April 17, 2024, the Student Services Health Team partnered with Grenette, Newton, and Rockdale Health to provide CPR, AED training to select school employees. And those are a few of the highlights from the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Dr. Bar, I think you are up next.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, and members of the board, I'm pleased this evening to provide you with an update on the implementation of professional learning communities within As you know, this work was included in our district's strategic plan, which the Board of Education adopted in 2018. Goal Area Four of this strategic plan is organizational and operational effectiveness. A performance objective within that goal area is to increase the quality and presence of professional learning communities, to which I will refer to following this as PLCs. The PLCs were to improve performance and ensure continuous improvement. There are two key initiatives in that performance objective. The first was to provide support to schools and district departments to ensure high-performing PLCs. The next was to improve access to and use of data by PLCs. In the following slides, you will see evidence of the work related to these two key initiatives. I'll begin this evening in the same place we started a little over two years ago as we began to engage in this work. What is a PLC? More accurately, we started with what a PLC is not. PLCs are not meetings. You can't do PLCs. You can't go to PLCs on Wednesday. A school can only become a professional learning community. A school becomes a PLC when it empowers educators to work collaboratively to achieve better results for the students they serve. The PLC-at-Work model is built on three big ideas: collaboration and collective responsibility, a focus on learning, and a results orientation. These three big ideas form a PLC system with inputs, processes, and outputs. Teacher collaboration, focusing on collective teacher efficacy and responsibility, serves as the input. The processes include instruction for all students at Tier One, additional support and interventions at Tier Two, and intensive support at Tier Three guided by four critical questions. What do students need to learn? How do we know when they've learned it? What will they do if they don't learn it? And what do we do if they already know it? These processes lead to outputs, which are students' proficiency and essential standards. These processes ensure that instruction focuses clearly on standards-based instruction, learning outcomes, and that student success is not determined by teacher preference, capacity, or style. For these reasons, PLC processes are critical for student success. In January 2022, a district guiding coalition was established to ensure schools receive the support needed to become high-performing PLCs. Guiding coalitions are groups of people with the experience, knowledge, and influence required to lead change within an organization successfully. The district's guiding coalition included the superintendent, all chief officers, several district office directors, and each of our school principals. The responsibilities of district guiding coalition members were to become PLC experts, share information about PLC processes and benefits. The first is sustained professional learning provided during the past 28 months and the development of a PLC playbook, which has been designed to mitigate barriers to successful The district guiding coalition created a comprehensive plan to support PLC development. This slide provides an overview of our professional development sessions. This sustained professional development was provided to core groups from each school, including the principal, an assistant principal, an instructional coach, the MTS-S specialist, and all district guiding coalition members. Professional learning focused on key PLC concepts and processes. Professional learning opportunities were also provided for district staff, the district guiding coalition, all instructional staff in the district, and new teachers. During this school year, solution-free PLC coaches visited each school and provided support. These coaches supported schools by providing guidance and expertise to facilitate the implementation and success of professional learning communities. The district guiding coalition also developed a PLC playbook for schools to use as a guide for best practices and to mitigate potential barriers. The PLC playbook was constructed around the big ideas of PLCs. In the first section of the playbook, which focused on learning, a process was defined for identifying essential standards. Essential standards represent the most important content that students should master to be successful in a subject area, the must-haves. All schools have identified essential standards, and work is underway to identify district-wide essential standards. This is critical in ensuring a guaranteed and viable curriculum for all of our students. This will ensure our students are receiving rigorous, standards-based instruction. Another section of the playbook, collaboration and collective responsibility, establishes clear expectations for scheduling time for teacher collaboration at each school. Protecting time for teacher collaboration is critical in PLCs. In terms of recognition, the school system received the 2022 Georgia School Boards Association's Leading Edge Award for its work supporting PLC development. This award highlighted the great work of our district and school guiding coalitions and our commitment to our students' academic success. Presently, nine schools are preparing applications to be recognized as solution-free, promising practices schools. To receive the award, the school must demonstrate a commitment to PLC processes, implement PLC concepts for at least one to two years, and have clear evidence of improved student learning. There are six elementary schools included. East Newton Elementary School, Principal Teresa Salz; Heard-Mixon Elementary, Principal Dr. Angela Cameron; Live Oak Elementary, Principal Dr. Tiffany Richardson; Mansfield Elementary, Principal Chris Haymore; Middle Ridge Elementary, Principal Rhonda Battle; Rocky Plains Elementary, Principal Ryan James; one middle school is included in this process, Veterans Memorial Middle School, Principal Dr. Tequila Curry; and two high schools, thanks to Eastside High School, Principal Jeff Chur, and Newton High School, Principal Dr. Shannon Buff. We are very proud of the work that has been accomplished at these schools. As you know, Superintendent Bradley has articulated a vision of becoming the fastest, improving school district in the state. This PLC work has provided a strong foundation for that charge. Our foundation is based on collaboration, data-informed decision-making, and continuous improvement. Collaboration allows our teachers to share expertise, resources, and best practices to enhance teaching and learning. PLCs use data to drive instructional decisions, allowing our teachers to identify student needs, track progress, and develop their practices to better meet the needs of all students. In closing, I appreciate all the work done to support the development of PLCs in our district, in particular, thanks to those who have served on the district's guiding coalition and schools' guiding coalitions. Madam Chair, this concludes all that I have prepared for this evening. I will remain here, but hand it back over you. I'll remain here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bar. If any of our board members have any questions or comments for Dr. Bar about what he's presented this evening? All right, I think we're good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is our enrollment report.
Madam Chair, as of May 1, 2024, enrollment in the school district as it relates to students is 18,910 students. That is the enrollment report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Roundtree. All right, we do not have any old business, so we will move on to our new business, and we do have action that will be required on Item A. And I believe Ms. Robinson is going to make this presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Erica Robinson, will present the tentative FY 2025 budget inclusive of amendments for adoption this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, good evening. The superintendent recommends the board to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year 25 for all governmental funds as outlined during the district budget workshop held on April 23, 2024. Following last month's workshop, the board requested the addition of two social worker positions and one district athletics coordinator position, which is important to highlight. This request amounts to $408,989 in total and has been incorporated into the tentative budget. However, we are actively exploring options to make at least one of these positions budget-neutral. In accordance with the district's legal requirement and standard practice, the tentative budget shall be advertised in the county's legal organ as well as on the district's website prior to final approval on June 18, 2024. Madam Chair, this concludes Item A. I will now turn it back over to you for any question or board discussion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Do we have any questions for Ms. Robinson tonight, or comments? None?
Madam Chair, if I may, just for the benefit of our viewing public, the document that is displayed on the screen will be available for public view on our website under our page describing all of our budget components, and so that will be available this evening by the close of this meeting.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bradley. Anyone else? All right, like I said earlier, we do need action taken on this Item A, so do we have a motion to approve Item A?
Samu.
Ms. Henderson Baker? Do I have a second? Mr. Anderson Bailey? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, then it passes. Thank you. Next up is Item B.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. In Item B, the superintendent recommends the purchase of math instructional materials needed for the school system. The recommendation is that those materials be purchased from Imagine Learning Illustrative Mathematics. The total cost is $1,753,331.60. As background, Imagine Learning Illustrative Mathematics is a comprehensive and effective mathematics curriculum that rigorously caters to diverse learning needs for students to master Georgia's K-12 mathematics standards. Teachers will have access to a curriculum that provides resources to cover all necessary standards for each grade level. The program is built upon extensive research and uses effective mathematics instruction to improve students' outcomes in mathematics through a problem-based learning curriculum. Also, it's important to note this recommendation follows a collaborative process involving teachers and parents. Purchasing documentation is provided, and the funding source is identified, and that is Item B, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bar. Are there any questions from our board members? If there are none, we will move on to Item C.
In Item C, the superintendent recommends the purchase of math textbooks, instructional materials, and resource packages from the following. First, Carnegie Learning for Grades 6 through 11. The total cost $1,417,942.47. McGraw-Hill for Precalculus, total cost $124,643.77. Savas Pearson Learning for Enhanced Advanced Algebra and AP Precalculus, College Readiness Mathematics Capstone, and Advanced Mathematical Decision Making, with a total cost of $325,079.90. And finally, Bedford Freeman &amp; Worth for Statistical Reasoning, AP Calculus, and AP Statistics, with a total cost of $84,447.94. As background, math instructors in Newton County schools reviewed and evaluated several math textbook materials to determine which best align with New Georgia mathematics standards that were implemented in math classrooms this school year. The Secondary Mathematics Textbook Adoption Committee took into consideration responses from math instructors and parents to formulate their recommendations. Purchasing documentation is provided, and the funding source is identified, and that is Item C, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bar. Are there any questions from our board members? If none, we'll move on to Item D.
Item D, the superintendent recommends the email security system needed for the school system be purchased from Sherlock Technology at a total cost of $86,910.20. The school system will use a national cooperative purchasing alliance contract awarded to ProMark to procure the system through its authorized reseller, Sherlock Technology. Purchasing documentation is provided, and the funding source is identified. Item D, Madam Chair.
All right, are there any questions from our board members? If none, we'll move on to Item D.
Item D, the superintendent recommends the email security system needed for the school system be purchased from Sherlock Technology at a total cost of $86,910.20. The school system will use a national cooperative purchasing alliance contract awarded to ProMark to procure the system through its authorized reseller, Sherlock Technology. Purchasing documentation is provided, and the funding source is identified. Item D, Madam Chair.
All right, are there any questions from our board members?
Is this a, I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Is this a new contract, or is this a renewal?
It is a renewal. It's a renewal.
Renewal? Okay.
Anyone else? All right, none, we'll move on to Item E.
Item E, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract with Tyler Technologies for pupil transportation management software be renewed for an additional contract period with an effective date of July 1, 2024, and an expiration date of June 30, 2025. The total contract value is $111,793.90. The school system will use a contract managed by Sourcewell to purchase the software needed. Contract documentation is provided, and funding source is there for review, that is Item E.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Item E? All right, moving on, Item F.
Item F, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for the provision of natural gas to selected schools and facilities be awarded to True Natural Gas. The effective date will be June 1, 2024, with an expiration date of May 31, 2025. The estimated contract value is $90,000. Contract documentation is provided, and the funding source is identified. Item F, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Any questions about Item F? None, we'll move on to G.
In Item G, the superintendent recommends the workflow management software needed for the school system be purchased from Incident IQ. Total cost is $43,073.34. Incident IQ provides a comprehensive program to support help desk ticketing for the technology department and maintenance work orders for the facilities department. The school system will purchase the software through a contract managed by TIP, the National Purchasing Cooperative. Contract documentation is provided, and the funding source is identified. Item G, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions about Item G from our board members? All right, we'll move on then to Item H.
The superintendent recommends that identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. Item H, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Any questions about Item H? All right, if there are none, just for the viewing public, this is our work session. That's why we're not taking votes on several of our things, only on items that needed to have action by today's date. So that leaves us on our agenda, Item I, which we do need to take action on.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Item I, the superintendent recommends the approval of personnel matters as discussed in executive session. Item I.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Item I?
Samu.
Second.
Ms. Henderson Baker, Mr. Trey Bailey, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, that takes us down to our other matters of interest. Any board members quickly have any other matters of interest that you want to discuss? If not, we'll turn it over to Dr. Bradley.
Madam Chair, if I may, just wanted to remind our community that graduations will begin next week. Newton High will get us started on Wednesday. Eastside will be on Thursday, and Al Covey will wrap up this year's graduations on Friday, May 24th. Each will begin at 8:00 p.m. All of the information that you need to know about each graduation is located on our website, but I did want to remind you of one small change from years past. This year, we will be implementing a bag policy whereby guests will be permitted to bring a bag that is clear, plastic, or vinyl. Also, small clutch bags without a handle or strapped are allowed, but must meet the size limitation of 4.5 by 6.5 inches. A visual display of that is available on our website for your review. Remember also, these guidelines have been implemented to assure the safety of all of our guests. Again, we kindly invite you to visit our website for more specific graduation information. Otherwise, we look forward to an incredible graduation season for Newton County schools, and as always, we encourage you and urge you to get there early. Graduates will be marching in this year, and I know you don't want to miss that.
And Dr. Bradley, before you move on, graduation will be available, is livestreamed on our YouTube channel.
That's correct.
So for those of you who may not be able to attend live, you can watch. It's always a fun night.
All right. Madam Chair, one more thing. Resulting from board action taken earlier this evening, three new principal appointments were approved, and I'd like to take a moment to announce them to our community. First, at Clements Middle School, we will be welcoming Ms. Fenisha Wilson, who was approved by the Board of Education. I think Fenisha's with us today. Stand up. Let's give Ms. Wilson a round of applause. Also, the board approved Ms. Kelly Walker, who has been appointed the principal of Mansfield Elementary School. Ms. Walker is here. Ms. Walker, please stand and be recognized. And also, the board has approved the direct appointment of Ms. Heidi Coachman to be the principal of Flint Hill Elementary School. Ms. Coachman, take a bow. To all of you again, we are expecting extraordinary leadership from each and every one of you. Please join me again in congratulating our new principals. Madam Chair, that concludes all that I have.
All right, thank you so much.